Well, we're about five o'clock, so just want to thank everybody for coming. I'm Chris Martin. I am the 2020 president of the Columbia Board of Realtors, and we're very excited to have everybody here. Especially to all the candidates that are in attendance tonight. We really appreciate it. And I just wanted to introduce our wonderful moderator for the evening, David Lyle of KFRU.
Thank you. I appreciate being able to be here also, and I'll also say thank you all for being here. The last time I was at an event when Dr. Stiefelman was there, it was a call-up school the next day event, too. So you will tell us that, right? If it happens while you're still here?
Yes.
Here's how we do this tonight. We're going to have a opening statements from all of the candidates, and then they'll have a couple of minutes for that. And then when we start questions, I have some questions from the board. I have some questions that others have given me already ahead of time for the school board candidates. And I have 90 seconds to answer the questions, and then if we feel like we want to follow up, we can give them extra time, like 30 seconds for a follow-up. And we'll try to rotate the best I can remember so that not the same people go first and last each time. I'll do the best I can to do that. And then after about an hour and/or so, we will wrap up our conversation with the school board candidates, and they'll have another two minutes to wind down and say anything that they feel like saying at that point in time. So that's pretty simple. We'll also take questions from you. If you have questions, we'll get to a certain point after a while, after we've kind of gotten into a routine here. And then the microphone is set up right there in the middle of the aisle. And if you have a question for the candidates, then please stand at the microphone or catch my attention, and we'll let you ask that question also. The school board race this year, there are three that will be of this four that should be elected to serve on the school board. Two of the four up here are incumbents, two are trying to win a spot of those three spots, and it's a three-year term. So let's start, why don't we start with some on this end with Helen Wade, and we'll just go down. And again, the timekeepers are right there on the front row. They'll give you kind of a 30-second warning and then a stop. When you see that orange come out, that's where you should start to wind down, although nobody here comes and slaps you on the knuckles if you go a little bit longer. We're pretty loose on this. But try to stay to that length of time, and they'll give you the countdown and the warning. So we'll start at this end and work that way.
Very good. Thank you very much, David. Thanks for having us all here tonight in the beautiful weather that we're experiencing here in Columbia. As David said, my name is Helen Wade. I've been a citizen here in Columbia for almost 30 years. I've been practicing law for just a little bit more than 16 years, and my focus is on family law. So the houses that you sell to the people who live in Columbia, how's the families that I serve, both in my professional life and as a member of the Board of Education? I am seeking my fourth term as a member of the Columbia Board of Education. I've been serving this community for nine years. People ask all the time, "Why do you keep doing this?" And the answer is that I believe that a strong public school is the key, the backbone, and the foundation of a strong community. Every single one of us, whether we have students in school or we don't, benefits from the contributions that a strong public school system makes to the community, both economically and otherwise. There is much work to do in Columbia. We've had many successes. Our voters have been very generous in approving the bond requests that we have made of them and have allowed us to improve the facilities that we have and build new facilities to serve the growth that this community experiences. In the upcoming three years, we're going to continue to battle those kind of wonderful challenges that continue to present themselves to the schools. We'll be opening a new middle school, and we'll be seeking new ways to meet the challenges that our changing population brings to the school district and the growth that is brought to the school district as well. We need to continue to be good stewards of the taxpayers' funds, your money, to meet and exceed the expectations of all of you and to make sure our kids get a second to non-education. Again, my name is Helen Wade. Thank you for having me. I appreciate it.
Good evening. I'm Jonathan Sessions. Again, thank you to the board, the Columbia Board of Realtors, for having this forum. This is unique for school boards. This is my first time being at this forum. So I'm running for a fifth term. It's about 10 years. My first term was a completion term, and I've had four full terms since then. I'm a Columbia native. I actually grew up here in Columbia, Missouri. The house I grew up in is off of Scott Boulevard in a area of county that the city is fully engulfed around. Many of the people in this room can guess which neighborhoods that might be. I went to the University of Columbia after going to Columbia Public Schools. I earned a degree in music education. I chose not to go into teaching. I am a non-practicing educator. I started a computer consulting business while I was a student at BYU, and I've been doing that ever since. The company's Gravity, it's downtown. We're the Apple folks. I am a member of the Chamber of Commerce and been actively involved in this community, whether it's leading choral ensembles, youth groups, giving back to the community at organizations such as Brag Tag and the True False Film Festival. Again, important question, so why do I want to run again? Because we're talking, it's been 10 years now. I recognize that Columbia Public Schools was an integral part of my success. It was truly my foundation. And I recognize that it's the foundation of what makes Columbia the place that we want, that people want to live. Over the last 10 years, Columbia Public Schools has been catching up. We've been getting out of the business of trailers, and we're almost there. The next 10 years is going to be about keeping up because this community is a community that's growing, and we need to make sure that we're prepared for that.
Good evening, everyone. My name is David Seaman. I want to thank everybody for coming out. Thank my brother named David Lyle for moderating this great event. I am a Columbia transplant. I am from what is now known as the other Columbia, Columbia, South Carolina. My family arrived here in 2003. I was a sophomore going to Rockbridge. I was only here for those three years, but Columbia Public Schools in those three years put me on the path to where I am today. I met my lovely wife there. We had our first child as senior and junior at Rockbridge. It's a pretty transformative experience, and the teachers and staff and counselors that were there got us to where we are today. Attended Columbia College, joined the Marine Corps as an officer after I finished college. We moved out to North Carolina. We enjoyed it. We loved the East Coast, but when it was time to exit the military, we decided that Columbia was home, and we wanted to come back and give something back to the community that gave us our start. I say all that to say that Columbia Public Schools has a fond place in my heart. It is the reason why I'm able to sit with these three great candidates at this table tonight. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't be here. I don't know where I would, what I would be doing. Those three years were formative, and as a father of three children, two of whom are in Columbia Public Schools right now, one on the way, I want to be there to ensure that they have the same opportunities that their mother and father had, that their friends' parents had. And that's why I'm running. So, thank you.
Chris?
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for having us out. My name is Chris Horn. I've been in Columbia for about 10 years. My parents were in the Air Force, so I benefited from being able to move every four or five years growing up. Came over to attend the University of Missouri, and so shortly afterwards, I started working at my current employer, Shelter Insurance, where I am now a reinsurance manager. I've moved a couple of times since starting at Shelter, but my wife and I moved back in 2017, and this is our home. You know, it's been an interesting journey for me, particularly since we moved back. I've had the benefit of going through Leadership Columbia class in 2019 while simultaneously doing some work for myself, on myself, through some NCCJ training that was put on by my employer, Shelter Insurance. And through that training, I learned a lot about myself. I learned a lot about some privileges that I grew up with, some agencies that I grew up with, and, you know, learning about myself and also learning about Columbia as a whole and particularly our educations through our education day, through Leadership Columbia, I just learned is, you know, now that I know better, it's time to do better. And so that's why I'm here. You know, I want to be able to be in a position to give back to a community that gives so much to others, and, you know, I want to be able to be in a position with our schools, you know, to make sure that, you know, my children, who are soon to be in the system, be able to enjoy, you know, the good quality of public schools that are here, just keep it going. You know, what we stand for, we stand for teachers and, you know, making sure that they have a positive work environment. You know, we stand for equity and inclusion, and we stand for, excuse me, we stand for, you know, some expansion of our early childhood education programs. And so that's what we hope to see, that's what we hope to accomplish in addition to all the new work that's been taking place so far. So thank you for having us here tonight.
Thank you for your opening statements. Please feel free to come and sit down here if you don't want to stand back there. You know, a lot of people are still just getting off work and trying to make their way here, and especially with the weather like it is, it kind of slows people down.
We're at the market. Now I'm going to run before you.
You've made that decision already. I don't have to text you.
Oh, it's good.
I've heard it here before. School's canceled.
You can text your kids, which I did at the other event, and I texted my daughter when Dr. Stiefelman was at an event two weeks ago, and I told her, "School's out tomorrow." She texted back, she said, "You're joking, aren't you?" Because it hadn't been publicly announced yet. But it sure was after that, and she started texting her friends, saying, "You want to know it first?" And they didn't believe her either. But no school tomorrow. So let's talk about schools.
Sorry, we have all the parents in the room. Thanks, Dr. Stiefelman.
I want to start with Jonathan Sessions on this one. Since you are running for reelection, but what one event or one person really kind of impacted you to make the decision the first time to run or this time to run for reelection? Some of this you've already kind of talked about, but I want more specifics about making that decision because I think it's tough to run for a position, school board or any position. You put yourself out there, you have these kinds of forums, and this is the first one of probably many that you have between now and April. But for each of you, I'm going to ask, and a person or an event, or it could be a cause that really makes you say, "Yes, I want to make this commitment."
So I shared in my opening statements that I have a degree in music education that I've never, never used in a classroom. But there was actually a professor of mine at the university after I graduated. She was getting her PhD, and that was Dr. Erica Neville. She is now the principal of Douglas High, our alternative high school. She was still, she was one of my professors, and she was still a professor at the time. I'd gotten out of school, and I had watched a lot of, we'd just come off a pretty turbulent time from the Columbia Public Schools. We had had a, it's just a toggle. We had had a lot of turmoil. We had a lot of individuals get on the Board of Education with an axe to grind, and I recognized that that's not a good reason to get on the Board of Education because if you have one item, if you have a small agenda when you're running for the Board of Education, at some point, you're going to realize that you're managing a system that serves 19,000 students. There are over 3,000 employees in the Columbia Public Schools. There's a lot going on. It is a big-picture job. And Dr. Neville actually encouraged me to recognize it myself that through my degree in education, growing up in town, the committees and the council, the city council things that I've been on, that I would be, that had the tools in my tool belt, that would make me a good board member, and that was at the ripe old age of 26. So that's the person that I could, that you could blame for making it happen, I guess.
David Seaman. So I'm going to be honest, I was kind of asked to run the school board, and it started out as a very small contingent of phone calls and things, and then turned into this bigger wave of folks, and I'm still not positive that it wasn't my wife behind it. After I was asked, I started looking into these things, and as a parent of three, you want to be involved in your kids' lives and their education, and going to parent teacher conferences is great, but sometimes things get lost in the mix. I started looking at some of these issues, and there were some issues there that I felt were important. And the decision really was made for me when I started thinking back to my time at Rockbridge. I had a counselor named Ms. Jane Peester. She's no longer working at Rockbridge. I believe she's at the zoo now, but she was almost a guardian angel for myself, my family, my brother, my mom. My father had passed away before my senior year. As I said before, my wife and I had our child our senior year. Mrs. Peester guided me from this troubling place in my life to where I am today. So I thought about, what would Ms. Peester want me to do? What would she want me to give back to this school district that she worked almost 30 years for? And I thought, this is what I should be doing. I should be injecting myself into the policy and the procedures at Columbia Public Schools, not just for her, but for all of our kids, for my kids, for Chris's kids, for everybody's Columbia. That's why.
Chris Horn.
For me, David, there was an event and there's a person, so hopefully I should break the rules. I mentioned earlier that I got to participate in Leadership Columbia. And we had several different days that covered a lot of things in everything Columbia, but my favorite days were Social Services Day and Education Day. And I can say that's when the seed was planted. I think about kind of when I was an undergrad, at times I lived in Columbia, you know, there was perception that certain schools were better than the others. But when I went through Education Day at Leadership Columbia, that just broke down everything that I understood about Columbia Public Schools. And so that was the event that really, you know, being able to take care of that or take part in that. Really, the person that influences me the most to do this is my wife, Amanda. She actually has the pleasure of serving our youth in our Columbia Public Schools, and, you know, I just get the inside glimpse of every day of what it's like to be a teacher in our district. And, you know, I get to see what it's like for these hard-working individuals to put everything that they've got and pour into these kids, and so, you know, that's motivating me. Plus, I can't do this without, you know, without her support. So really, that's where the motivation comes to do this.
Helen Wade?
Well, I'm going to jump on the parent bandwagon for a minute, but when I started this journey, my daughter was entering kindergarten, and there's nothing more motivating than looking at your own child and knowing how deeply you want the very best for that little person for whom you are so responsible. And I saw membership at that time on the Board of Education as a way to personally contribute to the kind of education that my child was able to get. So it was a very, very personal thought at that time. And I was lucky enough to serve then. And the longer I worked on the board, the longer I participated in the decisions that were being made that really touched my child's life, I began to realize that service on the Board of Education really is a way to not just improve and participate in the kind of education our kids get, we get to participate in firsthand the kind of community that we all live in. So the first person to impact my choice was my daughter. I'm also an attorney, so I see a lot of kids in pain. I see a lot of kids in crisis, and I see their families in crisis. And I cannot tell you how often those children or those families talk about teachers as being the person that keeps them together, the person that is there for their families and those children, who cares about them when perhaps they feel like nobody else does. We do have amazing teachers in our community, and continuing to recruit and retain the very best for every single one of our kids is one of the reasons that I think being a member of the Board of Education now continues to be so important because our kids are eventually what will be Columbia.
Thank you. Thank you all. Next question, and David, you'll start with this one. We'll jump into one that's the current school board has had to face. What's your position, as you understand it right now, on parents recording meetings with the school staff when they're talking about their children's IEP?
Right. So like I said, as a parent, attending parent teacher conferences, it may last 10 to 15 minutes. My wife and I are sitting there, we're speaking with the teacher. We both have questions. At the end, we walk out of that building, we look at each other sometimes and go, "What are we talking about? We're talking about science, but what was his grades? Do you have missing homework? What's the plan that we were coming up with?" IEP meetings sometimes last almost three hours. You're asking a parent or a pair of parents to try to remember everything that's happening in that meeting that's dealing with their child. So you have to understand where those parents are coming from. You also have to understand where the teachers are coming from. Some of them feel anxious about having those meetings recorded. So maybe they feel that way because they're not positive on what it is that they're supposed to be doing. Maybe they feel that way because there's a tape recorder in the room, and suddenly I have to start speaking in a way that makes me feel uncomfortable or unprofessional. I understand those points on the teachers' end. I understand the points on the administrators' end. But if we are going to put our students and our parents first, then it should be allowed. You should be able to bring a tape recorder into that room, put it on the table, and say, "I would like to record this. Are you comfortable with that? Okay. This is for my child. We are on the same team. We want the same goal. So let's figure it out." So I am in favor of recording.
Yeah, that's always tough because, you know, we live in a very litigious society today, and then, you know, there's, you know, issues or there's concerns with the cost for storing the data that would require for the recording, you know. But the way I feel, like David mentioned, these meetings can take hours upon hours, and as a parent that would be in that situation, you're already emotionally connected to your child, obviously. And so there's probably a lot of terms that are coming your way depending on the length of the meeting. It can be pretty confusing. So I too am in support of these just from the standpoint that, you know, I think it ultimately benefits the kid that are subject to the IEP meetings, the 504 meetings, and it ultimately benefits the parents as well. And, you know, any other issue with litigation, any other issue with, you know, potential costs, you know, those are the things that we can work together on and try to figure out.
Helen Wade?
So this is a fairly complicated issue that's been facing Columbia Public Schools in the very, in recent months. We've been asked by a group of parents to review the policy that exists now. So I want to sort of draw to everyone's attention, there are two kinds of recording, right? Right now, federal law requires that a school district allow parents to record those meetings when they need to do so in order to meaningfully participate in those meetings. So being presented with a question of, "What's my position on it?", it's easy, you comply with the law. You allow parents to record when they need to do so in order to meaningfully participate. The second nuance to this question is whether or not a parent should record or have the affirmative right to record by virtue of our public school policies when they don't need it as an accommodation to allow them to meaningfully participate, as would be contemplated under the Americans with Disabilities Act. In that circumstance, it becomes a little bit more touchy. It becomes a little bit more difficult, so difficult, in fact, that state legislation is currently pending with respect to this issue. And if passed, it's passed the committee at the moment, if passed, would put in place a mandate that statewide would require that school districts, every single one of them, allow for parents to record IEP meetings and 504 meetings and the like in order to have those recordings in their possession to review if they should choose to do so.
All right. Helen did an excellent job of getting a lot in there in her brief period of time, and it's always difficult to go after Helen with her legal expertise. I agree with her.
I think that was an insult, by the way.
A bunch of compliments. Very beneficial to have an attorney. We absolutely do need to be compliant with the law, and we are. Parents that need the accommodation absolutely, or a student participating in their own IEP meeting, or if I met a teacher that wanted to participate, needed the accommodation under the law, absolutely has the ability to do so and the right to do so. What I have, and members of the board have charged, there's an active committee working right now, task force, not only of staff, but also community members and some of the members of the community that have raised this issue and have questions about the policy. That committee is working together on better solidifying the procedures because, as Helen stated, we can record now, and one of the biggest challenges that the district has is the procedures for recording and the opportunity of recording, the devices we need to record. We don't have enough of them, so we want to make sure that we, if a person requests the ability to record, the right to record, that we can provide all of the tools that they need. And then more importantly, because a recording of a meeting of this nature would be considered part of a student's permanent record, making sure that we have the infrastructure in place that we can store that file for as long as we need to, which, as some tech folks would know, tech folks would know, it's a big file, but we need to store that for 23 years. We need to make sure, as Chris had mentioned, that we have the technology in place to record and store those files. And we're working to do so.
There is no, just, I guess I should go to Helen here. There's no law now saying that Columbia Public School District couldn't write their own unilaterally law saying anyone who wants to record can record these?
No, there's not. In fact, this has probably been something that you've read in newspaper publications on this issue, but Missouri is one of those states that is a one-party consent state. So, you know, people talk about wiretapping violations and those sorts of things, but Missouri is a state where one party can record without the other party knowing. And so now, there's no prohibition against the school district crafting a policy that would be affirmatively enabling of all types of recording.
Okay. Chris Horn, you get the first one on this one. I talked to a school administrator recently, and this administrator said that one thing that this person has on the table to handle regularly is talking to parents about the new school boundaries for next year, and those who are not pleased with where they see that their, especially older, child is going to be going to school. So my question, I'll start with this question. What benefits do you think that there was to having Columbia Public Schools hiring an outside consultant to assist with redrawing attendance areas for the middle schools and high schools? They went outside and then approved what was suggested.
So that's a good one. You know, boundary issues are hard, right? You know, as a kid that, like I mentioned earlier, had the benefit of moving every four or five years, you know, it was tough for me to, you know, be in eighth grade and all of a sudden have to move to a completely different state. So I get it. I get that these are hard. But, you know, I think that using an outside firm shows a level of commitment on behalf of the board and the district. It just shows that they care and that they're doing everything that they possibly can to try to solve this hard issue. You know, there's a lot of people that are invested, a lot of parents, a lot of students, a lot of community members that are invested in what the boundary is going to be. And so therefore, there are a lot of people that have really good ideas about how to do this. And so I think that, you know, when you see the opinion of a third-party consulting, excuse me, consulting firm, you just get an objective opinion and kind of help mitigate some of the, you know, the inherent biases that we have with wanting to make sure that our kids remain in the schools that they're used to. And so I think that, you know, like, again, it shows a level of commitment to say we're trying to do everything that we can to make sure we make the best decision possible for everybody.
You were among those who decided, yes, we could contract that out.
I was. The boundary issue, it is an ever-difficult topic. When I was a kid, I moved every single year during elementary school, twice in middle school, and four times in high school. I went to military school. I've moved a lot, and as a kid, that was just how I grew up. It didn't seem strange to me that I was always the new kid. I just was always the new kid, you know? It's just how it was. But now, as an adult, having my child have roots in Columbia and have an opportunity to become part of a fabric of not just a community, but a school community, I understand why parents don't want to be constantly facing change. They want consistency and stability for those, their students, their children. And as a member of the board, I want the same thing. Hiring an outside consultant enabled us to be able to make data-based decisions, so that we could draw boundaries in such a way that would relieve overcrowding, excuse me, overcrowding where necessary, would, to the extent that we can, maintain community-based schools that are a reflection of the community as a whole, enhance the ability of students to be able to walk to school if they are able to do so. It was a stream, of a streamlined process led by a company whose job it is to look at the information, to look at the community, to look at the population, and present to us scenarios that accomplish the goals that our community set for us, ensure that our schools are populated in a way that maximizes the benefit of the education being delivered, and do so in a data-based and research-based fashion, and involve the community in every step in a clear and concise way. I thought it was a... I thought it was a, it's an excellent process last time.
Um, I agree, it was an excellent process. The, you know, to, to say that we used a consultant this last time is to try to maybe suggest that we haven't always used a consultant. The Board of Education is not experts in growth rates and, um, land plating. We are always counting on experts. We contracted a service that not only specialized in that, but also specialized in, in running the process and to make sure that, um, it wasn't in, unduly influenced and simultaneously made sure that the community was heard. There were focus groups after focus group after focus groups that people got to participate in as they made that process. All following the guidelines that are set through policy as well as the missions and the, the, the charges that were set by the Board of Education, which was based around, you know, community schools. I'm going to slowly give away the street that I grew up on, but I grew up in a neighborhood that drove past, on the south side of town, drove past, uh, Fairview Elementary to get over to Russell, uh, every day. That's how I, my bus crossed in front of Fairview and got there, because that's the way the attendance areas were drawn. Um, I, every time my parents would find out I had a friend that lived in the other attendance area, they were just like, ah, I'm going to drive across town. You can't just ride your bike across Scott Boulevard, not at that era. Parts of Chapel Hill were still gravel. It, it, it wasn't a quick way to get around. So part of that charge was making sure that our, our school attendance areas were contiguous so that we could feel, um, like, so the schools could feel, um, more neighborhood-driven. As, uh, if someone remember the old high school attendance areas, it had students across the street from Hickman High School football field that were not able to participate in football because they didn't have the transportation to go to their attendance area down at Rockbridge. And that's, that's across the street. And, and we corrected some of those issues.
I have to agree with the, uh, the other candidates here and, and kind of like Chris and, and Helen. I was kind of a nomadic child. I, every two years we moved, so it seemed normal to me that, as I said, I was the new kid all the time. Living here, uh, I, I think, I think putting that decision, not the decision, just the process and an outside consulting agency was the correct decision. We have a lot of competing socioeconomic, racial, ethnic groups in this city. If you put that process within, it, it explodes into something that we want to try to avoid. So putting the process there and bringing it back for the board and administration to then approve and say, "Yes, this, this does reflect the way our city looks. It does, it does reflect the communities and the neighborhoods within the city," was the right process.
I'm going to ask another question about drawing the boundaries and, uh,
Where are you going to go?
Helen Wade, what's that?
As, uh, where are your houses drawn?
No, I don't care where mine is. My daughter's going to finish in the school that she is right now, no matter what you do. I only say that because she's a, she's a senior next year and I don't think that they would move her.
We have a grandfather.
Yes, we do. So she's going to be okay. Well, my question is, I, I hear the talk and I, I, we asked the question about the, getting a contracted service to do this and I like the answers and the answers were all good. And then you'll hear the talk about, um, neighborhoods where you can walk to the schools. You know where I'm going to go with this one. We have neighborhoods that are going to be pretty homogeneous if you look at them and draw the lines. So where do you, it seems to me like the school board came down on the lines of saying, "Let's try to keep it so it's more of a community school." Uh, my question then became, becomes, what factor do you do to say, "We want to increase diversity"? Because when you have a school that has a very low percentage of free and reduced lunch and then you have another one not far away that has a very high percentage of that, is that, is that good? So that's my question. Helen, you go first this time.
So this is, this sounds like a, um, an impossible goal. To some extent, it is. Um, if we could wave a wand and ensure that every single one of our schools reflected the makeup of our community as a whole, that would be ideal. But then you are going to have kids doing what Jonathan described, going from one end of town, clear across the other end of town, to attend school with children that they may not see anywhere else. Um, when we draw boundaries, there is a very distinct balancing of those competing interests that is employed in coming up with a solution that the community gets on board with. Every time we look at our boundaries, which is something that we're not just going to do now, it's going to happen again and again in the years to come because our community is growing and changing. Um, that question will be repeated. But when our consultant and the expert that we've selected to use now provides us with scenarios, there are a number of them. Um, and we, so, well, I'll speak for myself. As a board member, I want to know how the community feels about the different scenarios that are presented. Um, every time scenarios are drawn up, there are some that are weighted towards the neighborhood school, the walkable, uh, routes to school. There are others that are weighted more towards, uh, providing each school environment with a diversity that's reflected by our community. Um, and we seek and receive the feedback from our, our constituents, our taxpayers, the people who send their kids to school and eventually come up with a solution that fits the needs of the community. So is it good or is it bad? It's a challenge. That's what it is.
And the story that I shared was, was not an over-exaggeration. The, the east side of Seventh Street was, up until the attendance areas were changed, Rockbridge High School. You could sit on your front porch and, and watch a football game at Hickman, um, but be in the Rockbridge School District. And when, as a district, our watchwords are achievement, enrichment and opportunity. If we don't have transportation that runs in the evening, that can get a student from downtown Columbia all the way to the south side, that's an opportunity gap. That's a student who's not going to be able to participate in band and theater and athletics because they can't get down to the south side. And, and the same, same goes no matter where we draw those attendance areas. Is, we had examples of what the perfectly designed socioeconomic balance, demographic balance of Columbia map looked like. And, um, it was absolutely bizarre. It was part of public record. You could go look at it. It was absolutely unachievable. It was the most bizarre and gerrymandered map that you've ever seen. And it had kids from all over town driving every which way. Um, and that's, that's not, um, that's not addressing the issue. That's trying to find balance when we probably as a community need to be having a larger conversation about what does affordable housing look like in our community? And what is transportation and access to transportation look like in our community?
I'd have some of those questions for the city council.
Maybe we'll just come up here on the front row.
So I went from a, a middle school in Atlanta, Georgia, where the school was 98% black, to a high school in Colorado Springs, where I was one of only four kids, only four black kids in the entire school of 800 students. Um, I say that to say, when I made it to Rockbridge, it was, it was almost culture shock. You go from these two different areas where the boundaries are drawn almost deliberately to focus folks into a certain area, to Rockbridge where, yes, there were the crude jokes about whatever, but it's much better than where, where it was, where I came from. So is it perfect? No. But we are trying. The school district is trying. I can applaud the school district for doing that. My bigger concern is, as David mentioned, some of these schools have, uh, disproportionate numbers of students who have free lunch compared to other schools. Are we providing the same resources in these different areas as we are at Rockbridge and Hickman and Battle? Are the kids who go to Blue Ridge receiving the same resources as my kids who go to Gentry and Mill Creek? We can talk about the boundaries, but are the resources there? Do we have the same level of teachers there? Do we have the same resources and the form of counselors there and books? That's the bigger concern. Do those kids have the same opportunities where they're based at now as the kids in other areas of the city?
Yeah, this is, like everybody's mentioned, this is a tough issue. And, you know, it's, it's not impossible, but it is impossible to make a decision and keep everybody happy. You know, in my, in my, my visits, uh, visiting with educators and administrators, um, whatever educators had a, a pretty cool idea. Of course it needs to be vetted and tested, but you know, you know, you can abandon the notion of having walkable neighborhood schools because of the way our dinner wraps are in our city. And we can just do vertical or diagonal districts, you know? You want to talk about, you know, creating equity amongst schools, we do that. But then again, we're into a whole bunch of transportation issues. People are not going to be happy. Uh, so that's, you know, there, there are solutions. Or, you know, um, we can all individually go on journeys and think about kind of, when we're making decisions on where we decide to live, um, you know, we can think about, try to break down the notion in our head that certain schools are better than others. You know, like I said, um, going to college here, I believed that certain schools were better than others. And I was exposed to really what's going on in our districts and I'm like, every school is great. So, um, it's, it's not, it's not an issue that can simply be solved with the school or with the, uh, Board of Education or with CPS. It's going to take many sectors, you know? We need to cross-sexute this. We need to talk about affordable housing. We need to talk about transportation. We need to talk about access. It's going to take a, it's going to take a community effort to really see the diversity in our schools reflect, um, the community that we have.
I kind of want to follow up on this in just a moment, but I want Mark to go here.
I do too.
Yeah.
And I didn't know if this is at all.
This is a good time. I mean, those of you who are going to ask a question, let me see you fidget or kind of get up and, you know, I just want to be in that microphone.
And I apologize to Chris because I told him I would shut my students around. I just need to listen, but sorry. First, due to impending inclement weather and the timing of expected snowfall, Columbia Public Schools will not be in session on Wednesday, February 5th. Just in case you were wondering. On the, on, on the drawing the boundaries, I thought that a great point was made that it ought to be data-driven. And I think that is a wonderful way to be able to defend it. But what if you looked at this from another side of it? Draw the lines where they're supposed to be. But give grace to the people who are the ones that with common sense applied should just absolutely ordinarily be able to go to that other school. So give it up on that side. Do it data. Here's where the line is. The reason I say that is I went through this process with my daughter several years ago and she would have had to go to three different high schools in four years. And I didn't think that was quite right, but it took me eight meetings with the school district and several appeals and several different things. And I didn't qualify on all the different qualifications, but it made absolute sense to me. Could we, could we amend the policy on the back end and draw it right on the front end?
We're going to do this, uh, I'll say this just because I know Mark and I'm going to give him a hard time. He's not timing the questions here.
Sorry, I'm on the radio sometimes.
Jonathan, I think you're first up on this. Let's, let's do, um, 30 to 45 seconds on this.
Yeah, and I'll keep it brief, brief. I, um, I, I think that, uh, if you, and, um, uh, Mark, I have no doubt you're going to text me later about this answer. But, uh, I, I, I do believe that if you, you're making data-driven decisions, everyone's going to have a different opinion about where they're supposed to be quoting you exactly. Um, uh, or where they make logical sense, because that's where the emotion part gets into it. And, and why that, I, I felt that the, the work of, of the consultant, with the charge of our, our policy and the charge of, of the board's, you know, factors that we wanted to consider was important. Because it did take, um, it, it, it took that, that individual, um, that, that maybe that personal agenda out of the situation.
So Mark, I'm going to assume that you were in one of those districts that was kind of a square, that it had one of those little weird things, areas that juts out.
My neighborhood always gets caught in this because we're real close to the line.
Right, so.
And my daughter went from a private school to a public school to a redistricted public school and now.
Right, so I, I would say, uh, we talked about a common sense solution there. Maybe once we do this again, we say, all right, we've got these districts or we've got these, these areas where the schools are. If you are within a certain mileage radius of this, of this school here, then this tru- this sort of trumps this. So if you're in that little weird area that juts out, yes, you need to go to the school up here. But you're also only five miles away from this school to the south. So, and we say, okay, well, this is an option for that parent or that student. I, I don't think enough students are affected by it to make it out to be this giant issue to where we can't try to address something like that. But you're right, that, those kind of common sense solutions are something that we could, we could take into account.
Mark, uh, one of the words that you said, you said some good words, but one of the ones that stood out to me most, use the word grace. And we're trying to figure these things out, right? We're trying to answer hard questions and find solutions that are best for everybody. And we know that we can't provide one solution that works for everybody. And so, uh, I think, you know, I think we all need it, that we all need to give it, particularly in this space. But you know, a- as I sit here and think out loud, which can get pretty dangerous. You know, you know, one thing I can think about is, you know, we've got lottery schools. So maybe we have lottery options for people that fall in your situation. Uh, I don't know if that's just an idea, but I think that's what's excellent about having a board and, um, you know, putting it, making it a coming-up on the board and the administration to work with the community and with these third-party consulting firms that it has to be to answer these hard questions.
So Mark, if I could just put it a little differently, is your question, why can't common sense drive government policy?
It's, it's that with the words, "At least sometimes."
So, um, when we look at these boundaries, we do do, to some extent, what you, um, have articulated. What does the data say? Um, if we were to be blind, um, as to the needs of a particular family or a particular neighborhood, what would be the computer-generated answer, right? Um, and once that computer-generated perfect answer, um, is developed, and sometimes there's more than one answer to the question, um, there is an analysis of the way in which that particular answer or answers affects people and communities. There is intention to provide relief, uh, to families in particular, um, who are going to be facing multiple moves. With the consultant that we use now, we are able to drill down into the data that we're provided, down to the household level to see, wait, is this the neighborhood that we moved last time? Is this the neighborhood we moved twice? Um, and one of the things that we specifically had, the guy specifically articulated was, um, a desire to avoid that. But when we have, we do have many personal requests. I mean, it may surprise you how many people do ask, well, but I have this reason or that reason or a geographical reason or some other reason why I ought to be able to go to this school. We slide away from the concept of being equitable to all students and all parents when we start to consider in too much granular detail each and every exception to the rule, without articulating a very specific criteria to which to apply the exception. It might be a little neely mouthed, but it's the best one I can do.
Okay, an audience question?
Thank you. Um, so I'm a, my son's grown, but I have some go-through the wonderful Columbia school system. Um, I'm going to ask a question that's kind of more national, maybe even global, and I'd like your feedback on it. It's something that I raised with the superintendent and got some positive response and also Representative Kip Kendrick and Blake. So we've had a lot of tragedies this summer, um, really terrifying and probably terrifying to a lot of our students, um, as a result of guns. It's, it's a national issue, but it's also now a very local issue. So I have a public health background and I wondered, we have two public health semesters in our schools. Could we not have something in the curriculum that sort of addressed gun safety? And Representative Kendrick suggested conservation has a gun safety curriculum in their hunter education. And so I kind of like your feedback on that. The superintendent was interested. He maybe looked at the outdoor classroom, but I actually think the older students, like the ninth-grade public health classes, they're like part of the semester, would be a better place for this because it is a public health issue. So your feedback.
David Seaman is up first.
So I'm going to tell you that as a Marine, um, gun safety is very important to me. Fire and sa- firearm safety in general, whether or not it's a ninth grader or a third grader or a kindergartner is important. I could see us putting some type of curriculum into that. It is, it's right up there, as you said. It's becoming much more prevalent, uh, especially here locally. Every few weeks, we hear about. Every few weeks, we hear about something happening and unfortunately, because I know a lot of these folks, every few weeks I have to read about a name that I know from high school as either perpetrator or the victim or sometimes both. So that's, it is high important, it is something that we should definitely look into. Definitely, you're a hundred percent correct.
Thank you.
Chris Horn?
Uh, I mean, you know, we live in a state where a lot of people love their guns. And so, uh, and it's just those, like you already mentioned, it's no secret all these tragedies that are happening, particularly here locally. You know, at, at the very least, I can see implementing extracurricular activities around gun safety. I would, I would not be opposed to having some sort of gun safety curriculum. I mean, who wouldn't? I mean, anytime you have an opportunity to speak to the youth and to tell them about the dangers of these weapons, uh, why not? And so certainly if there's capacity for it, there's space for it, there's opportunity for it, I would be all for that.
Thank you.
Helen Wood? Um, I think your direct question is, can we do it? Columbia Public Schools can do just about anything if we think that that's going to have a real effect on our, our kids. And what you've articulated is true. We do have a rising epidemic in Columbia of gun violence and the school district is part, parcel of the solution. Whether it's the delivery of a gun safety class as part of curriculum or the introduction of something of that nature. As, uh, I hate to use the word optional because when you do it, it sort of tends to diminish the importance of the, of the topic. But if there was an, uh, a, a, a club or something like that, they're, they do exist, but in a different capacity to what you're thinking of. I think that that's a good place to start. I also think that, um, a school district plays a role in the safety of kids in general. We have information and resources at our disposal that if used in connection with the resources at the city and the county level, could really make a difference in the lives of the kids who are potentially a perpetrator, potentially a victim, and make a difference before that tragedy actually happens. And that's something that I think we should, as a community and as a board, focus on in the years to come.
Jonathan Sessions?
Um, I, yeah, I, I'm, I, I've talked to Kim, I've talked to Dr. Stevelman about this. I do think probably the easiest way to integrate, uh, gun safety education is, is at the nature school, which we're, we're opening first. And I think that's a, a good first step and I think that would be a way to, to integrate it. You know, it's, it's a question of, of the safety of, of our citizens. Like in the, they, it, it, to some extent, Alice, I hear you asking, like, gun safety is a problem because there's a lot of people getting shot. We don't, a, a day doesn't go by where there's not a shooting in the news. And, um, i- it's not something that, I don't like the fact that we have to spend so much money as a district installing safety glass and, and vegetables and vestual, vegetables, um, to, to steer people in, you know. I don't, I, I don't like spending the money on, on modifying and fortifying our schools when we could be spending that money to help educate students. I'm, 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 have I missed a stop already? Oh, okay. Um, but I, I, it, do I think that maybe gun safety might help reduce this? I, I don't know. I don't have that answer. I don't think teaching students how to use a gun safely is going to solve the problem of, of, of a lot of the gun violence we see in our society. You asked as a national perspective, I think we need to start looking at issues of, of mental health.
All right, thank you for your question. Um, I have a question that kind of goes back, I think David was saying this in answering the question about, um, looking at schools that were appropriately diverse. And you said something about, we need to make sure that we get the same resources at each school. So this is my question. It's actually one that, uh, someone who used to have worked in the school district, I asked for this person to give me some ideas and I'm going to grow off of one of these questions. Teacher shortages exist in some areas like special education, math and science. Should there be a ta-, a pay differential to recruit teachers in certain curricula areas? I would add to that, a good friend of mine who was a sub a few years ago, subbed at every single school in the district and said to me that there is a vast difference in these schools. And this was a grown man who could take care of himself, but said that it was very hard to teach in some schools. Should we not only have differential pay if we could work this out with the teachers, I understand that, but also in certain schools to try to attract more experienced teachers and better teachers at certain schools where the achievement level is lowest and the difficulty of, of the school atmosphere? So Chris Horn, you're, granted, you get the first one on this one.
I think that that would help, uh, but I think it goes a little bit beyond that. You know, when you start getting into sliding scales and pay performance, you know, that gets a little tricky. But, you know, you're, I mean, you're addressing the, these sub, our subgroups in our, in our communities that just are underperforming. You know, it's something that is not exclusive to Columbia, it's something that everybody continues to talk about. But we've got to start finding solutions for these. And so, uh, I wouldn't be opposed to that. But I think beyond that, uh, you know, we also have issues with, uh, with, um, with aides and other resources that, uh, that these teachers need. So, you know, we need paras, we need more classroom aides, we need more instructional assistance. And so these are positions that, you know, are hourly paid and, you know, in an economy where the, where the unemployment rate is pretty low. But on the flip side, the underemployment rate is, is not something to brag about. I think that we can create a, a, a better labor force and attract a better labor force by offering better pay incentives. And so you provide the instructional aides, you provide the classroom aides, you provide the paras, particularly that, you know, our students and IEPs need. And then you start to, you start to work on closing that gap for sure from that perspective.
Helen Wade?
Okay, so, um, you said something that I wanted to pick apart from there. Same is not the same as equitable, right? So every school in our district, every one of our thirty-nine buildings has a very different student population in it. And providing the same resources to every single building does not do the same thing as, uh, providing the right resources for the kids that attend that school, all right? Our district needs to be focused on ensuring that the resources that are necessary to that student, those students, our students' achievement are provided when and how they need it. With respect to differential pay with regard to teachers, I think you're getting very, very close to measuring teacher efficacy solely and exclusively by student performance. There is more to it than that. When you look at the formula that makes a student successful, um, you're talking about not just what happens during the school day, but the way in which parents and guardians and families are allowed to and encouraged to interact with the teaching community and the school community as a whole. Another thing you said, would it help, um, the students in the schools that, um, may appear to require different teachers for the teachers to be better? I would challenge you to say every teacher in our district better be the best. And I think if we make sure that we are putting that as our overarching goal, is to make sure every teacher has the resources available to him or her to be the best teacher he or she can be and put them in a culturally competent position to meet the needs of the students that sit in his or her classroom regardless of which building it's in. Those are the kind of teachers that we want and those are the kind of teachers we need to find a way to compensate fairly.
Do you think we have culturally competent teachers in each and every classroom from Blue Spr-, uh, Blue Ridge to, uh, Mill Creek? Do you think that they have been evaluated well? Are we looking at them in a way that says, okay, these would work best in this classroom?
So your first question was, is every teacher culturally competent? Uh, no, that's a priority of the district and should be an, an ever-rising priority going forward into the future. Um, are we looking at teachers based upon their appropriateness for each individual classroom? I think we're looking at them from the standpoint of their qualifications and whether or not they are the best kind of teachers for the district. But I will say this, it is meaningful for kids in the classroom to have a teacher or have an adult or have a mentor who looks like them. And ensuring that we have a, a teaching force and an employee force that looks like every student is important and it should be a priority for the district as well going forwards.
Um, David, how many of those questions would you like me to answer?
And David, the basic one of, would it be, would it be something that you would, how do you respond to pay differential saying, you know what? To get a teacher who is experienced and has been tried and found.
See how many of these are going to split it?
Excellent, to get into a tough school situation.
Helen, Chris Wright, um, we are getting into a dangerous, like, performance-based evaluation where you were paying teachers based on, uh, um, student performance, which in many cases, um, would, you know, i- i- is not always within a control, especially when you consider some of our schools that are, uh, high mobility. Um, when I say high mobility, I mean, buildings that have a seventy-five percent mobility rate, what does that mean? It means a child that is there on the first day of school is, seventy-five percent of that building is not there on the last day of school. That's a massive turnover. At one of those buildings, though, when we talk about that, that's, that's a major impact on what a school performance looks like. When you have seventy-five percent population turnover in a single building in a single year. But Chris commented a minute ago about recognizing what is actually going on at the building. Uh, Dr. Stevelman and I pulled some data out of the highest mobility school last year. And in that building, there were, we asked, who was there on the first day of kindergarten and who was there? And, and how many of those students were there on the last day of the fifth grade before they went in? There were twenty, there were only twenty. So over those six years, only twenty kids continued in that single building. But those twenty kids, nineteen of them were advanced and the, uh, eighth, and the twentieth was proficient, which is on a five-point scale, I'm sorry, we didn't land on like test, standardized testing there. But what that tells me is if those students stay in a program with our highly qualified educators and the resources that we distribute equitably throughout the district, such as putting additional resources at schools, such as Babel is requested by the teachers because they said that they were in need. If students are in our buildings and they stay in our buildings, they are successful. And so what we need to talk about addressing is some of the challenges of our community and, uh, the mobility rate and finding ways like, I'm sorry, I'm way over time, David, so I expect you to just be kind of rolling with this as well. But when we talk about things like at Blue Ridge Elementary, what a year-round school with wraparound services would look like? Making sure that we provide transportation if they move out of that school attendance area, that we could get those students back into, that student that moves out, get that student back into Blue Ridge. Those are the kinds of, those are the kinds of unique ideas that Columbia Public Schools are looking at to, to address, um, some of the issues that, that doesn't come down to how do you incentivize to fill some of those roles? And then I have like, uh, like all the answers to all the other questions you asked.
Use it in your closing comments.
So, so I agree. I think once you start trying to pay teachers based on what school they're at, the perception becomes, if you go teach at this school, you receive hazard pay almost because this school is bad. So those teachers can eventually leave that school. But as, as, uh.
Jonathan Sessions?
Jonathan Sessions.
It's a long day.
Right, yes.
It's going to be snowy out there.
Yeah, thinking about tomorrow. It's, it's Jonathan just mentioned, the mobility rate there for a lot of those students is high as they go all the way through the school. But those first few years, they're still there, so they can't leave. They're still at that school where the perception has now become, if you teach there, it's hazardous. I substitute taught as well for a few months before I joined the report. And, and we're right, some of these schools are completely different in child behavior. So you do get into a dangerous area there. Now, there's something that Jonathan just mentioned about, uh, year-long schools. And I think that's a, a great idea in some of these schools. As we mentioned before, some of these kids, the only meal they may receive almost all day is that reduced lunch. So having them out of school for almost two months at a time sometimes puts in a huge burden on their parents, puts a burden on the child. I think implementing that year-round school where they have a two to three week break during Christmas time and during the summer would help reduce some of that stress on the household and help keep those kids actually in school and paying attention to them and their parents involved in their education.
I thought we had a question.
Oh, okay. We're running, we're running short on time.
Um, all right, well, we're wrapped. I, I would just ask in, in relationship to what you all just said, taking into account experience or number of years at a job, do you all, does every lawyer in the law firm get paid equally? Does every employee that you have, Jonathan Sessions, or the better ones get paid more to take on the harder jobs?
So, one of the things that you're talking about is to incentivize the things that work, right? What does the data say works for kids?
Get the, get some of, if you have a student, you know, to be honest, at Mill Creek, who's going to succeed pretty much regardless of who's in the classroom, but you can get a very effective, good teacher in Blue Ridge or Derby Ridge or whatever you want to say, wouldn't it make sense for accomplishment to put the best where they're needed the most?
Sure, I think, um, so two quick, quick answers. Firstly, um, there have been, uh, there's been a collaborative effort by the teachers and the administration to develop a different kind of compensation schedule for teachers in Columbia Public Schools than what we've had in the past. Um, and the overarching goal of the committee that was convened to look at the way we pay teachers is to incentivize the things that the data says works. What do we know works for kids? What does student achievement data reflect is effective in terms of teacher quality? And the three-column salary schedule that we're operating off of now, with a grandfather provision in it for teachers who would otherwise have been disadvantaged by its implementation, rewards teachers for the things that we know work. Years of experience, education, uh, you know, development as a professional. Now, does it make sense to take a teacher who has, you know, we have a teacher in our district, her name is Kathy Steinhoff. She's a very, um, a much revered teacher. We, uh, would we put her in a place where she could potentially have the most effect? That's where she is. Our teachers in general, when we place them in buildings, there are a number of factors that, uh, contribute to the decision with regard to where to place them. One of which is, what are this, what, what qualities does this teacher have that fits with the building and the classroom in which we contemplate them teaching? Um, so in some sense, common sense does prevail in that regard. However, I can't stress enough that a suc-, the success of a student has a lot more to do with mult-, and multiplicity of factors, both school-based and otherwise, beyond the quality of the teacher in the room.
We'll have to be real quick on this.
I would, I will turn to, you know, one of the questions you asked earlier is, is about support. And there are many support structures that surround our students and, uh, that are, that are, that are people on an hourly sca-, on an hourly rate. And one of the things that this board is actively working towards is making sure that all individuals in the office, or all individuals that are working for the Columbia Public, oh, by the way, you asked how much I pay myself the least in my office from your question. I pay myself the least for your question, um, but.
You could do that with Peter Stevelman.
Yeah, so, um, but when it comes to our hourly workers, we need to get that rate to fifteen dollars an hour. It is from many of our specialties, but it needs to be that way for everyone. That's what's going to allow us to have more paras and classroom aides. At the same time, they, we have a program that we found in Ann Arbor that's a federal program. I'm sorry, Gainesville, Florida, it's a federal program and it's what gives dinner to students, all students at Hickman, Battle, um, Douglas and Rockbridge. Any student, if there's there for an after-school activity, they can get a lunch. We've, our dinner after school, because they're there for after-school programs. We've expanded that to two middle schools. We would love to expand that to more, but per some of the conversation that we've had today, it's hard to find staff that will work when we have unemployment rates as low as they are in Columbia. So the only way that we're going to be able to compete, the only way that we can fill some of those jobs where we know we have gaps is if we're at a competitive salary range. And that's where we've got to get, especially for our hourly workers.
So, let's just be honest, yeah, the schools that we're talking about are primarily minority schools. There are minority students in those schools. My fear is that if we increase that pay scale to where, yes, we're going to pay teachers more to, to go teach at these schools, do those schools go from being quote-unquote bad schools to now they're just outright dangerous schools? And do we now have teachers who just refuse to go teach there? And do those kids now suffer because of it? As Helen said, the majority of the factors that affect these. As Helen said, the majority of the factors that affect these kids are outside the school. They're in the community, they're in their family. If we are now trying to pay teachers more, or quote-unquote "best teachers" to go into these schools, are we setting them up for failure by not trying to address all the other issues? Because you could put the best teacher on plan in some of these classrooms, and if nothing is being done in the community or to help out that family, they're still going to fail. So do we create teacher burnout in that instance? Do we create that perception that, yes, these kids are not only bad, but they're dangerous in their communities? Those are things that have to be addressed and thought about before we start talking about increased pay for some of these schools.
Chris.
You know, our conversations with, with our educators, with our administrators, I haven't met one that said, I don't care about these kids. Every, every single one of them absolutely loved what they do. And we haven't had conversations about compensation, now maybe because it's inherent, but everyone that I've talked to said they love what they do, they're committed to their kids, I mean, they're committed to seeing their kids succeed. What I have heard them say is, you know, I'm here to educate, I don't know what to do when this student behaves in this manner, or I don't know what to do when this student creates, presents a danger to themselves or to others. And so it's not, I don't think it's so much an issue as making sure that our teachers are compensated, while that's very, very important. I think it's making sure that they have the aides and the resources and the parrot that they need to make sure that they can focus on doing what they love to do.
Let me ask one more question. I promised somebody who emailed me today that I would work this one in. So 60 seconds for each of you. Jonathan, you're first. About 1 in 8 students, or 12%, or 1,700, however you like the number, in Columbia Public Schools receive special education services that are required by federal law. What's one strength of the district's special education services department and what is one area where that special services department needs improvement?
Our teachers is our strength. Our teachers is absolutely our strength. Our, our teachers love our students, they, they come to work every day to help and, and they, they want to be there. They're passionate about education and providing support to all of our students, whether that's someone that's a student, so that's, that's a long spectrum of services. So it might be someone that's got a, a, a student that has kind of a permanent aide beside them, or it might just be a student that has like ADHD. So that's a big spectrum, but our teachers know how to serve our students. Weaknesses, we need to, one of the things that has become clear to me as, as a board member is we definitely need to provide resources to our families, because many of our families, as they enter in to IEP meetings, 504 meetings, it is a new world, there is new language, there is new acronyms, and it can be an emotional conversation to have. We need to make sure that as a district, we are providing support to our families experiencing that for the first time or ongoing, as many support structures for our families as we are for the students that we serve.
David Seaman.
I agree with Jonathan, I think the strength here is teachers. As Chris said, I've never met an educator that said, I don't care about these kids. If you go into this profession, you care about these children. It's pretty obvious. Having spoken with some of these special education groups around the city, it appears that we are almost busing some of these special education kids from the schools that they should be going to, to other schools because there are better resources there. You're taking these kids out of the schools, away from the kids that they play with in their neighborhoods, the ones that they see every day. You're taking them away from them to put them here, so that's, that's a big weakness there. If we're going to support these families and support these kids, they should be in those areas that they should be, within those boundaries, going to the same schools as their peers, as their friends that they were.
Chris.
That's interesting. You know, kind of on the flip side of that, I can see, I can see that as weakness, I can see that kind of as a strength, because I think the, the district recognizes that, you know, the resources are short, and so they go out of their way to identify where we can place the kids where they can best be served. And I think it's interesting that we've got, in each of our buildings, based on the resources that are available in those buildings, we've got specialized, you know, sections or, excuse me, school or, excuse me, classrooms and resources available to address the IEPs as prescribed in, in these kids with these special needs. So I think it's, I think that's a strength, that they go out of their way to identify the needs, obviously, and getting them into places where they can best be served. It's also a weakness because, again, it goes back to what I talked about, making sure we, we have a shortage of parents, you know. Worst-case scenario, you know, I've, I've met with community members who have had a kid or kids that have got prescribed IEPs, and their, their prescription says that they need parents, they need aides, and that kid doesn't have the parent. So what happens? They behave just as they were prescribed. Maybe they misbehave, we perceive they misbehaving, and then they get taken out of their school, sometimes handcuffs, because they didn't have the resources that they need. It's not that kid's fault, that kid's knowing exactly what professionals said he was gonna do. And so that, that's probably the, the biggest thing that we need, we need just to make sure that they have the resources that they need to, to succeed.
And Helen.
So, this sounds a little bit like a choir over here, but our special education department, not just the teachers, but the counselors, the liaisons, the administrators, the team that convenes to ensure that our students who participate in special education receive the kind of education that can provide a foundation for them to, to excel. Special education is often thought of as something that serves children who aren't gonna excel, we just want to get them by. We want them to excel because they can. We do have weaknesses. I think that we need to focus on the fidelity with which the special education services are delivered from building to building. There needs to be consistency from building to building. It shouldn't be different, it should be the same. With respect to our, I suppose, lighting the pathway for parents who are new to the process of special education or IEPs or 504s, what is this about? What are we doing here? What federal laws are they? We're talking about providing more of a menu of services. What can we do to help you understand so that you can help your student? Third, I think that our district, we are making strides toward this, but we need to focus on not just ADA compliance, are we compliant with the requirements of the federal law, but is our district, both the physical plan and the delivery, delivery of the education accessible to all of our students and all of our parents?
We have to go to closing statements right now, and we're gonna start with Chris Horn and move down this way, since we went the other way on opening statements, so please, whatever you want to say here at the end for a couple moments.
Whatever I was?
Whatever you want to say.
You know, I usually don't like to brag about kind of serving others, because I think it's something that should cause us to be silent, but I think it's important that you guys know that, you know, I'm committed to service. I mentioned earlier, going through Leadership Columbia, learning more about our community, and really learning more about myself and knowing better and wanting to do better. So I think it's important to know that, you know, I, I'm active in our community, you know. I've got the benefit of advocating for some of our most vulnerable youth by serving on the Board for Harlem Reserve Casa. You know, this is not my first venture into interacting with the students that we serve through CPS, you know, I, I serve as a mentor through the Mobile Woke Program. Every month I meet with sophomores over at Hickman High School. I get the opportunity, or had the opportunity, to serve in the capacity of a panelist and a, and a board for the MAC Achievement Scholarship two years in a row. And, you know, with Shelter, we're a partner in education, and our, our, our partner in education is Weston Middle School, and I've been blessed with the, with the ability to be appointed to that committee through Shelter. Service is something that I'm about, service is something I'm committed to, service is something that I want to do, hopefully, with the opportunity to serve the youth in the best way possible, you know. We talked about making changes in our education system in our community, and what better way did to serve our youth, to serve our kids? And so, you know, some of the things that we stand for, that I stand for our teachers, I want to make sure that we provide the best positive work environment for our teachers, you know, our students directly benefit from it, you know, our teachers are happy, our kids directly benefit from that. I also want to continue the efforts that the district's doing through our diversity, inclusion, and equity reference. I think that's super important, particularly when you have, you know, a, and then wrapping in our student population, or excuse me, our teacher population that doesn't right now reflect the students that they serve. So it's important that they understand who we're teaching. And, you know, again, I, I think it's important that we expand the reach of our early education programs. You know, if we can give our kids in pre-K age at a position where they're not planning catch-up by the time they're in kindergarten, we set them off for success going forward throughout their education journey. And so, you know, hold that great opportunity, sir, and if I do get that opportunity, I'm gonna do it the best way I know how. And the best way I know how is to, you know, to embrace the truth, and that takes time, that takes good relationships, but I think that's the most effective way to see the changes that we all want to see. Thank you for having me tonight.
Thank you. David Seaman, please.
So I could sit here and just read everything I've said and tell you a little bit more about myself, but I'd like to take this opportunity to talk about something that's important to me, and that's just voting overall. We are all up on the ballot April 7th. I think everyone in this room is aware that this is a year that we're gonna have another large election coming up. It doesn't really matter to me who you vote for, what matters to me is that you actually vote. I have friends who are deployed overseas, are stationed here in the U.S. still. As I said, it doesn't matter who you vote for in my mind. Your vote, though, in my mind, is a way to ensure that they're made safe, and that's very important to me. So as I said, who you vote for doesn't really matter to me as much as the fact that you vote, that you tell your family to vote, your friends, the person behind you in the grocery store, please make sure you vote and that they vote. It's extremely important. I want to thank the Board of Realtors for having an amazing forum tonight. I want to thank my friend David for an excellent night of moderation, and I want to thank each and every one of you for coming out and listening to us drone on about very important issues. Thank you.
Jonathan.
Thank the Board of Realtors, thank you all for coming out. I know, like, everyone stressing about what the weather's got up there. I, I'd like to ask for your vote on April 7th, and also I'd like to take this opportunity and ask for your vote, yes, for the no-tax-increase bond issue. 10 years ago, I got on the Board of Education, and we had 175 trailers in the Columbia Public School. Went into a meeting, I realized we were counting the ECO Schoolhouse Grant as a trailer, so right there, one meeting, I got it done at 174. 10 years later, with an actual bond strategy, a proper bond strategy, actually looking into the future and asking our community to tax themselves two, well, you know, over four years, twice in a row, to then come back and put us in a place where we could do no-tax-increase bond issues every two years. We will be opening John Warner Middle School, we're gonna be opening the renovated Locust Streets Elementary, and we're going to be sub-20 trailers in this district, and those 20 trailers, a good portion of them are not going to be used for Hackett in the classrooms. That is a massive achievement, and that is an achievement that takes long-term planning, that takes fiscal responsibility. When we got on the Board of Education, we weren't forecasting our finances. We now have a five-year fiscal plan, so we know what our reserves are gonna look like five years from now. I got on the board and we were laying teachers off and freezing salaries. I never want to be in that place again. I want to be prepared should there be another academic, or fiscal downturn. We have three watchwords, achievement, enrichment, and opportunity. And I've talked a lot about what the, the finances and the machine and the business and all of that, but in the 10 years I've been on the Board, we've gone from an 81% graduation rate to a 90% graduation rate. Our black students have gone from a 67% graduation rate to an 82% graduation rate. We've continued to expand opportunities throughout the district, investing in the enrichment part, investing funds and eliminating the pay-for-play that you see at some schools, whether that's musical instruments or athletic uniforms, so that every student has an opportunity to participate. And we have programs that we've implemented that are providing opportunity, opportunity such as the Early College Program that we saw up in Ann Arbor, where students are gonna be able to spend the last two years of their high school career going to Mobile Area Community College and then potentially go the Mizzou-Tomac route and get out of the university within a couple years of graduating from high school with their associates, associate's degree simultaneously. This is an amazing opportunity for our students, they'll be able to take AP classes too. That's a question, I'll do that. But these are the kinds of programs, the academic side, that we, I don't think we get to spend enough time in these forums talking about, because we are truly seeing amazing strides and achievement, and I'm sure I'm over my, I'm sure I missed the stop sign a minute ago. So what I will say is.
You gotta hold that up.
I, I mean, I'm sorry if I missed it. These are the kinds of programs that I think are important at Columbia Public Schools. I thank you for your opportunity, and I ask for your vote on April 7th.
And Helen Wade.
Well, it probably goes without, without saying, thanks for having us here and having the heat on. You know, being a member of the Columbia Public Schools Board of, Board of Education for nine years does make me an incumbent, but I'm not complacent. I'm running again for the fourth time because there is still work to do. If I thought I was done, I would quit, or not done. There are challenges that this district faces this year that are different from what they were last year. They're gonna be different in two years and in three years. And having had nine years of experience on the Board, I know how to work through those issues. I can be critical, I can be analytical, and I've learned how to listen to the differing voices that this community comprises. Columbia Public Schools is committed to making sure that every child, every child, whether they are an academic, whether they excel academically, whether they excel athletically, whether they excel in theater and arts or in math and engineering, every student receives the very best education that they can possibly receive. I am committed to making sure that that continues and improves, and that every student needs what they need, and looking at that through a lens of equity, to be the best kid that they can be. It's very important that the public school system in this city continues to be an excellent public school system. As I said at the opener, it's the foundation of our community, it's the backbone of our economy, and to feed it and to feed our children and to put their education and their success first ultimately puts Columbia first, and that's what's important. My name is Helen Wade, I'm available should you have any questions, and I would ask for your vote on April 7th. Thank you for attending and waiting out the weather, I appreciate it.
I think that there will be an opportunity for you to talk about more of these things, as you probably will have another forum or two between now and April. In April, early, the first Tuesday of April, you'll have an opportunity to vote for up to three of these members. There are three positions that are gonna be filled on the school board for the next term, and I appreciate what they have said tonight, I think this has been a good opener, and I think that we've got great candidates. Thank you all for being here, a round of applause. And then we'll have our City Council portion of the evening.